Good afternoon and welcome to the March 6, 2025 National Capital Planning Commission Meeting. First, Secretary Hoddlecox, could you please take the role?
Yes, Commissioner Cozart?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Stidham?
Here.
Commissioner Argo? She's still joining. Vice Chair Hewlett?
Here.
Chair Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Not on yet.
Commissioner Tonsal Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Cash is not here yet. Commissioner Hassett?
Here.
Commissioner Argo? Marcel Acosta, Executive Director, and Diane Sullivan, Director of the Current Planning Division, are also in the meeting.
Thank you, Secretary. And I would like to note the presence of the quorum and call the meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there's no objection, the agenda as posted is adopted as the order of business. Then we all please stand beside the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undaunted, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Agenda item number two is Report of the Chair. And I just wanted to let everyone know that last Friday I had the pleasure of joining Marcel Acosta and Julia Costa and Matt Fliss from NCPC staff in a meeting with Artie Harris, who is the Chair of Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission, Jason Sartori, the Planning Director of the Montgomery County Planning Department, and Mity Figerado, who is the Director of the Montgomery County Parks Department. This was a friendly and informative exchange of information, talked about our initiatives, our best practices, and discussed how we could look forward to collaborating together on regional issues in the coming year. And I also want to take a moment to thank the staff who planned a wonderful field trip for us to St. Elizabeth's West Campus and remind commissioners that our SVPs for the April 2nd field trip are due to the secretary by tomorrow, Friday, March 7th. But again, it was a wonderful meeting with our colleagues in Maryland, and we enjoyed getting to know one another and having a good conversation. And always grateful to staff for the great work that they do for us, and we look forward to our field trip next year. Agenda item number three is a report from Executive Director Marcel Acosta.
Thank you, Chair Goodman, and good afternoon. I just have one item to report on today. As you know, the Commission will be hearing the presentation on the title Basin Development Concept Plan today. I just want to point out that the public still can provide public comments to the National Park Service through March 19th, and the details you'll find on NCPC's website that will take you to a link to the Park Services page. You do have my full report in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Marcel. Do the Commissioners online or in person here in the Commission Chambers have any questions? For the Executive Director? I don't hear any questions coming right at this time. But Agenda item number four is a legislative update from Secretary Megan Hoddlecox. Megan?
There's no legislative update this month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do Commissioners have any questions regarding any other issues for Megan? Hearing none. We'll move on to Agenda item number five, which is the Consent Calendar. And there are three items on this month's consent calendar. The first item is to approve preliminary site development plans for the Arlen D. Williams Jr. Memorial Bridge Span Replacement. The second item is to approve preliminary site development plans for the James J. Rowley Training Center Defense Training Facility. The final item is to approve amendments to the Commission's bylaws and delegations. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar from the Commissioners online or the Commissioners in the chambers? Any questions or a discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Commissioner Stidham. Now, can the Secretary please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
The motion was made by Vice Chair Hewlett and seconded by Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo? Vice Chair Hewlett? Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonsal Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassett?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has carried. We have six items on the open session agenda today. Agenda item 6A is a request to approve comments on the Concept Master Plan for the Title Basin Development Concept Plan. Mr. Webb?
Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the Commission. The National Park Service is seeking the Commission's comments on a Concept Master Plan for the Title Basin area located within the National Mall and Memorial Parks Unit in Washington, DC. On February 19, 2025, NPS hosted a NEPA-SCOPA meeting for the plan. This kicked off the first public comment period, which extends to March 21st. During this time, the public, stakeholders, and the Commission have the opportunity to provide initial comments to NPS to help guide the plan. This is just the first step. NPS will host additional NEPA and Section 106 consulting parties meetings in 2025. They anticipate a draft environmental assessment for review and public comment in early fall with the draft master plan submitted to NCPC around the same time. NPS will continue to host NEPA and Section 106 meetings with opportunities for public participation and comments. Following this process, NPS will request a final review of the master plan, and a NEPA decision document will be prepared most likely in 2026. The Commission's comments will be included in scoping along with those from the public and other stakeholders and help inform the plan's development moving forward. To reiterate, there will be many more opportunities for public engagement and input. The area focused for this plan includes the Title Basin and surrounding land located within West Potomac Park in Washington, DC. The project area encompasses approximately 250 acres and includes specific areas and memorials such as the Franklin Delano Roosevelt, the Martin Luther King Jr., and the Thomas Jefferson Memorials. The plan will provide a guide for the implementation of individual projects as funding becomes available in the future. As this is a concept review, the focus of today's presentation is to receive Commission comments and feedback prior to preparation of a more detailed draft master plan by the applicant. In this case, the focus of the review is understanding the appropriateness of the project for the site and context and understanding any particularly unique or complex issues that need to be addressed. As such, in today's presentation, staff will identify comments for the Commission to provide as guidance for further master plan development. The project is part of the stipulations agreed upon in the Section 106 memorandum of agreement to resolve the adverse effects resulting from the project for the rehabilitation of the Title Basin and West Potomac Park seawalls project, which was approved by the Commission in September 2023. NPS intends to raise the remaining sections of the existing title basing seawalls in the future in a method similar to that used in Phase 1 of the seawall project as funds become available. For the next submission, staff recommends the master plan include a narrative and associated graphics that describe the proposed seawall improvements that form the baseline flood protection of all the alternatives in this plan. Here are some images of the existing conditions found around the title basing area today. Growing visitation, escalating costs, and the lack of consistent federal funding have left the NPS unable to keep pace with repairs needed at the Title Basin. In particular, the cherry trees are in constant need of replacement as the trees cannot survive in current conditions of trampled, compacted soils and the twice daily inundation of brackish water in certain areas. The National Park Service project goals for the Title Basin area include to expand the connectivity of multimodal circulation, transportation, and infrastructure, enhance the year-round visitor experience, vistas and view sheds, and gathering spaces, manage ecological impact sustainably, protect the cultural resources, and provide perimeter site security at the Jefferson Memorial. In addition, staff supports the applicant's goal to disperse visitors to other areas in the Title Basin, especially towards the Potomac River, and to expand other opportunities for experience, including recreation and respite activities. Staff supports the applicant's intent to improve circulation within the Title Basin area while integrating more opportunities for pedestrians and bicyclists and less reliance on automobiles and surface parking. As I will describe in the following slides, the three alternatives each contain successful components that may be interchanged or combined in the development of a preferred alternative. The development of the alternatives was guided by a few key themes. All three alternatives would help address increased visitor and maintenance demands, balance project needs and goals, historic preservation, public safety and design, also address resilience, and enhance the National Mall's Title Basin area as a destination for both local residents and visitors from across the country. While each alternative is framed using a specific lens, each includes components that are applied in different ways. All address the overall goals such as expanding pedestrian access and circulation, the addition of cherry blossom trees in new areas, and an emphasis on important views and vistas. Therefore, staff finds that the three alternatives each contain successful components that may be interchanged or combined in the development of a preferred alternative. And now I'll walk you through each of the three alternatives and discuss the recommendations. The first alternative we'll look at is Alternative A. And Alternative A prioritizes expanding the connectivity of multimodal circulation, transportation, and infrastructure around the Title Basin area. As indicated on this slide, this alternative includes two primary pedestrian circulation routes that allow visitors to experience the Title Basin landscape at an upper and lower level with ancillary paths braided through the landscape to connect the more prominent pathways. For this alternative, the applicant is also proposing a new detached pedestrian bridge across the northern part of the basin. The roadways and parking areas are designed to provide larger contiguous space for flexible uses and gatherings while bicycle and scooter infrastructure is paired with pedestrian circulation for efficient access to points of matriculation or the city fabric beyond. For this concept, the cherry blossom tree canopies support a pedestrian hierarchy within the landscape surrounding the basin and direct views and provide a backdrop for viewing this historic landscape, which is intended to relieve overcrowding on the inner ring adjacent to the water. On this image, you can see that the applicant is proposing in some areas of the reconstructed seawall, cantilevered viewing areas over the basin. And now let's look at Alternative B from the plan. And Alternative B prioritizes the year-round visitor experience, enhancing vistas and view sheds, and expanding gathering spaces. In this alternative, vistas and view sheds are a key organizational component of this alternative, which formalizes existing view sheds to key features and cultural resources within the Title Basin and adjacent landscapes. It also emphasizes reciprocal view sheds and creating intimate view sheds that may be experienced at a more personal level. On this slide, you can see images of two desirable views from the basin, across the basin, with the Capitol on the left looking down Maryland Avenue and the Washington Monument on the right. While these views are existing and can be found in all three alternatives, Alternative B attempts to place an emphasis on this visitor experience. Alternative B uses topography, the cherry blossom tree canopy, and pedestrian pathways as view framing devices and gathering spaces are made accessible and easily identifiable through the landscape, providing moments of pause along an episodic journey. Similar to Alternative A, the applicant is showing cantilevered viewing areas over the basin. While staff supports the potential use of the cantilevered walkways along the Title Basin seawall as shown in Alternatives A and B, we recommend that the applicant provide an analysis of the criteria used to refine their locations for the next submission. Alternative B adjusts existing vehicular circulation around the basin to reduce the amount of time a pedestrian or cyclist spends at crosswalks entering the site, and redundancy in bicycle infrastructure provides options for commuter and tourism-focused cyclists to navigate in a safe manner. The final alternative we'll look at is C. And Alternative C emphasizes proposed wetlands at the basin's edge and the interior of the larger site, connecting the current iteration of this landscape to the tidal flats that existed prior to the mid-1800s. Alternative C reduces parking and paves space and prioritizes the use of alternative transportation methods with a proposed rideshare drop-offs, bus stops, and Americans with Disability Act accessible connections. The continuous ring of cherry blossom trees along the entire basin edge merges the cultural and ecological history of the site into a modern representation. Now let's shift the discussion to the proposed new perimeter security at the Jefferson Memorial. The temporary security measures at the memorial, which include concrete jersey barriers as shown in this image, detract from the dignity and national importance of the site. As such, staff supports the need to develop a more comprehensive approach to perimeter security at the Jefferson Memorial that is compatible with the cultural landscape. Perimeter site security in Alternative A proposes layered low walls, as noted in red on the drawing, topographic changes, and bollards along with a number of openings to allow for pedestrian movement. Alternative B proposes a mostly continuous low wall, also topographic changes and bollards, but with more limited openings for pedestrian movement as compared to Alternative A. And Alternative C proposes a meandering, mostly continuous low wall that follows a pedestrian path, topographic changes, and bollards, and incorporates bio-retention at low points to capture water from planted areas and roadways. The number of pedestrian access points is similar to Alternative B and Alternative C. As the applicant refines the project for the next review, staff recommends that the proposed perimeter security approaches for the Jefferson Memorial should avoid long, uninterrupted walls to assist pedestrian movement while limiting interventions that alter the landscape. Moving forward, it is also important that the applicant consider historic geometry of the Jefferson Memorial's landscape to inform the approach to the new perimeter security. Regarding other plan components, staff supports the applicant's intent to introduce additional concentrations of cherry trees away from the Title Basin rim, assisting in dispersing visitors to other locations in the Title Basin area. In addition, it is important to reiterate that the Title Basin is an important historic and cultural landscape. As such, staff recommends the applicant use the Title Basin's cultural landscape as a lens to refine the alternatives in a manner that does not adversely affect the contributing elements of the landscape and built environment. Also, staff recommends that the master plan consider approaches to avoid impacts to the contemplative and reflective spaces associated with the existing memorials. To conclude the presentation, staff suggests that all the alternatives include elements that could be beneficial to the Title Basin experience. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, all three alternatives contain elements and components that address the overall goals of the plan, such as expanding the pedestrian access and circulation, the addition of cherry blossom trees in new areas, and an emphasis on important views and vistas. These are applied in different ways in the alternatives. As such, staff recommends that the applicant continue to refine the alternatives following public input to ensure they are clear and discreet and so that the potential trade-offs between the different priorities can be evaluated. Moving forward, staff recommends that the applicant conduct additional coordination with the District's Department of Transportation regarding potential physical and transportation impacts resulting from any reconfiguration of Main Avenue, as well as coordinating with the Department of Energy Environment regarding potential stormwater management approaches and other issues related to water resources. Finally, staff recommends that the applicant continue to coordinate with all the appropriate stakeholders and consulting parties through the National Environment Policy Act and the National Historic Preservation Act or the Section 106 process. I have covered the other recommendations in my presentation, so I will not repeat them, but they're here for your reference. At this time, I'd like to introduce you, Lee, of the National Mall and Memorial Parks, who I believe is online virtually, who would provide some comments. And also David Rubin of Land Collective and other members of his design team are here to assist in answering any questions the Commission may have. Thank you.
Have a question for our team. Yes, we have a question. Commissioner Tonsal Williams?
Yeah, so looking at the three alternatives, they all seem so very similar that it's hard to really parse the differences other than the introduction of the wetlands. So, Lee, I don't know if you could highlight what the kind of primary differences are between the three, because of course my thinking is, well, yeah, just do it all. Obviously, there's a reason they're proposing three different ones. It just isn't evident really to me how different they are. So if you could touch on those, that would be great. Thank you.
Let's see if we could go back to the slide. I think if you go to Alternative A. Here with us. Okay, we can start with this one. So in Alternative A, which is the emphasis is really on the connectivity, what they're really trying to do is provide the two layers of primary circulation. Of course, the first layer is really the primary one that exists today, which is around the Title Basin itself. And again, the idea that all of these alternatives would happen after that the entire seawall is reconstructed in a similar manner to Phase 1. But what they've introduced is a secondary layer, particularly in the southwest, towards the playing fields. So that is a means to truly disperse the visitors from just the Title Basin area to get them to the playing fields and also the opportunities for views towards the river, just to show that there are other areas, as well as continued circulation to the memorials in the location. Another change in Alternative A is the proposed freestanding pedestrian bridge that you see on the top, which again, right now, when you go over the Cuts Bridge, the pedestrian right there next to the vehicular. So this would be a new experience for visitors to take advantage of. Some other is relocating some of the parking area, particularly in the northwest or kind of where Main Avenue is. So I would say that is the primary emphasis on Alternative A. And B, because this is one that they really want to try to emphasize, you still have multiple circulations, but they're less, I think, emphasized with that circulation directly around the playing fields. This one, they're trying to emphasize that the views and vistas that are there now, they would be an opportunity to really enhance those, provide places where visitors could stop and really kind of have your Instagram moment. Again, all the playing fields and the recreation is still intended to be in all three alternatives. Just how they may be configured is the difference. And then the big one is in Alternative C, is the introduction of the wetland approach to the north of the Title Basin, the north area of the Title Basin, and then adjacent to the Jefferson Memorial. I would say in Alternative B, again, they, while cherry blossoms would be planted in all three alternatives, I think the way that they are hoping to carry them out in Alternative B would be another way to kind of disperse people away from the Title Basin area. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Tonsal Williams, are there any other questions for our team from Commissioners in the chamber or online? Are there any more questions? If not, we're going to turn to public testimony, and we have one person signed up to speak today, Mary Dolan, who is here in person. You are testi-- welcome, first of all. It's good to see you again. And you're testifying on behalf of the FDR Memorial Legacy Committee, and you have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please let us know when you are ready.
So much. And hello, everyone in person and online. I understand I'm the first person of the public to testify live post-COVID, so yay, congratulations. And for you all, and I want to really applaud NCPC for having a public option. Really makes a difference to see you all and be able to, you know, make a little bit of a connection with you all. I just, I do want to start with just feeling very, very much the history of this moment. How lucky are we to have this opportunity to vision what this fantastic Title Basin can look like in the future? I want to applaud NPS and the cooperating companies that have been part of helping us get to another, another part of this history of this important part of America. So I take my opportunity to make these comments very seriously. So as you mentioned, so I am Executive Director of the FDR Memorial Legacy Committee, which is the Friends Group for the FDR Memorial. We've been around since 2019. Some of you folks have seen me before. In the interest of time, I'm going to abridge my comments, which you already have in front of you. So I want to just, a couple of different ways I'm going to present my comments today. There's a couple of questions, a few observations, and a few requests. First, I do want to thank Mr. Webb for asking for further detail in explaining the proposed seawall and the elevation that this project presupposes. I have not studied what many of you have studied. I'm coming to this very much as a member of the public, as somebody who runs a nonprofit organization. So it would be really helpful to understand the sequencing and the processes that are needed in order to actually get to this plan. And I'm having a hard time just understanding, considering a plan that presupposes another plan that still hasn't been presented to you all and also needs to go through quite a number of steps, I imagine, public, all those steps that one does. So that's an initial that I have today. But assuming that we are going to do the whole seawall renovation, I'm wondering, what is the proposed height that all of this is planning for? Maybe it's in there. Again, I'm not as schooled in this as you all are. What is the projection for the elevation for to protect those fantastic cherry trees? You know, we, you all know, we got the storm rise, we have settling of the land, we have the heat, you know? So let's, where is that consideration? And I'm just wondering, are those projections for the assumed height? How, how long does that protect the FDR Memorial? I know we've got that protection of that berm, but you know, every time I go down there during heavy rains, it keeps getting higher along those stairs. And I don't mean the seawall, I mean the actual stairs that lead to the FDR Memorial. So all impacts from subtle to major must be considered. I haven't seen, heard mention of, of, in the NCPC report of September 2023, there was a call for considering inclusion of the tidal gates. I haven't heard that mentioned, so I'd like to hear about that again. A few more comments specific to the plans. Thank you for mentioning that the FDR Memorial must remain as it was designed an outdoor sacred space. We, I don't know if there's encroachment of those ball fields, but let's be very purposeful in that, as well as the bike lanes. Remember, the FDR Memorial was carefully crafted as a, as a journey and needs to be maintained as such. Security, I want to understand a little bit more about, I get it, about protecting our national treasures, but is there a security concern for some of the other memorials or for the tidal basin in totality that could be considered? Is there a security assessment that can be shared? Is there one that's planned? What happens to the Canadian trees? That's right at the entrance of the memorial. In the public scoping, it was mentioned that there is a set of stairs to the FDR Memorial from the seawall that would be removed. Can we get some more detail about that? Why? How? Isn't that going to remove some of the desired circulation? Tiered seating, we want universal design. I'm running out of time. I do want to just also ask for future public scoping meetings. It'll really help for the public to have materials in advance. Thank you, NCPC, for making your materials done in advance. And so just really help for those of us who are trying to do our due diligence to have things in advance and have it in a timely manner. And I just want to thank you all very much. Let's have a great long-term solution for the entire tidal basin, for all those memorials. And I really look forward to working with the rest of, with everyone here to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and for providing provocative questions as, as the design is pursued and as NCPC is involved in it. Are there any other comments or questions from our consultants online or from the commissioners? Any other comments or questions? Yes, Brian?
Good morning. I just, one of the things I found interesting about this plan, and I think this is something I'd like to come back, I would hope, as a commission, and talk about more broadly, is I thought two strands were really provocative. One, the idea of encouraging a wetland solution. And, and the second, dispersing the event, meaning the cherry trees throughout other areas in the mall. And I think these are two really interesting strategies that could apply in lots of different ways as we go forward as, as we run out of locations for, for new events, for, for new memorials. And I think these are two really interesting strategies, and perhaps not today, but I think at a later time, I think it would be worth our time and attention to really focus on those strategies we might wish to encourage other applicants to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Commissioner Green. And Yuli, I see you have a hand up.
Yes, I missed when you called me to talk about the tidal basin. And I, I do want to express our support for this design team. And we, I'd like to thank you for taking the time today to review the tidal basin concept, development concept plan. I want to say that dating back to the 19th century, the tidal basin is a remarkable hydrological engineering achievement and an integral part of the, part of the West Potomac Park landscape. It has evolved into iconic and cherished cultural and commemorative space, attracting six, 36 million visitors from around the world each year. More than 1.5 million visitors come during the National Cherry Blossom Festival alone to enjoy more than 1,500 cherry trees that surround the basin. Additionally, West Potomac Park is a vital component of the city's recreational trail and athletic field system, significantly impacting the lives of those who live and work in Washington DC. However, the National Mall and tidal basin were not designed to accommodate the volume and types of use we see today. The area also faces challenges related to sea level rise and structural deficiencies due to aging and deteriorating seawalls. To address ongoing damage from daily tidal flooding, the National Park Service is undertaking seawall rehabilitation in two southwest sections of the tidal basin and north section of West Potomac Park, with plans to continue those efforts following the completion of the Phase One seawall project. The seawall project, the seawall is not the only element. There are so many elements within the tidal basin and West Potomac Park landscape. Changes to this linear infrastructure will impact a much larger area. A comprehensive plan like this for the future of the tidal basin will allow us to make informed decisions in the next phase of seawall rehabilitation, ensuring that work integrates seamlessly into the future landscape. We see right now is a critical time to establish a vision that protects and enhances our cultural and natural resources, while providing healthy, safe, and vibrant open spaces for both visitors and city residents. We are very excited about the ideas presented in this study and the issue it has considered. We recognize that we are in the early stages of the public scoping phase and are very eager to hear all the comments. I'd like to thank you, thanks all the commissioners and all the public representative for your comments and feedback.
Thank you, Yuli. We appreciate that input from you, and that concludes the presentation and the public testimony. So I want to thank you again for bringing that information forward and also to Ms. Dolan for the same. Is there a motion to approve comments on the concept master plan for the tidal basin?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham and Commissioner Vice Chair Hewlett for the motion and the second. I will now open this up, this subject up for the commission's discussion, and we're going to begin again, we'll begin with Commissioner Stidham.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. As we mentioned, I think several times now, we are at the very, very early stages of this project. We just initiated public scoping a few weeks ago. There's a few more weeks left in the public scoping period. This is the very, the public's first opportunity, but nowhere near the last opportunity to provide us feedback. So we appreciate everyone's attention to this very important project that really takes the seawalls project to the next step and ensuring that this landscape is preserved for the future and has the ability to accommodate the massive amounts of visitation that we get here. In a way that it equalizes the visitor experience for everyone. So I just wanted to add that bit of information. We look forward to the continued engagement and conversation on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo. I think, Commissioner Argo, should we, should we come back to you in a minute? If you could, you're, you're joined the meeting twice, and that's why there's an echo. If you could get off one of the joins you did, and we'll come back to you. Is that okay? Okay, got it, got it. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Argo. We'll come back to Vice Chair Hewlett.
Yes, first, thank you, Mr. Webb, for your presentation. All three alternatives have really good points, so I would agree with Commissioner Tunstall Williams for, for asking for that clarification, because I like the overhead bridge and also the cherry blossom trees everywhere. There's so much to, so many good things in all three alternatives. But the good point, the good thing is that, as you laid out in your chart earlier, and as Commissioner Stidham said, this is just the beginning of public input, and it will continue from that chart. I saw it continue right into 2026 as well. So that's a long time for lots and lots of input. And I also heard Yuli say she welcomes, she's eager to have that input. So I think this is a win-win for all of us, and it's much needed. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. No, this is a terrific project, and I'm, it's been very exciting watching, watching it develop and become more sophisticated over time. And I do, you know, hope we as a commission can, can take some time to talk about these. I think as these strategies are really important, you know, that combination of armoring versus to what extent do we allow some of the site to return to more of a natural state and defend itself in a more natural fashion, allowing, of course, there is going to be a visitor impact. But perhaps it's not a bad visitor impact. And, and I also really like the idea of sort of dispersing the event, moving cherry trees to different places. You know, we simply are running out of sites in the monumental core. And this could be a really effective, long-term strategy for other applicants and other projects to move events across space and time to really allow the, the monumental core extended to be, to be, you know, experienced more fully. And so again, we appreciate the, the work the applicant put into this. I really, I really like these different strands. And I hope we as a commission can talk about these strands, and I think this could be a really interesting way conversation to have with every applicant, because obviously this problem's not going away. You see, level rise is going to continue to be an issue at all of these sites. And, and I like the, and I really enjoy these, these, these multiple strands as a way of, you know, combination of armoring and natural impact and dispersal. And so I hope we can, can, can you just talk about this? And I really do appreciate the applicant's sophistication in this approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Argo, are you on, available now?
Can you hear me?
Yes. We'll come back, we'll come back. Okay, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Tunstall Williams, please.
Thank you for the presentation and to the Park Service for a wonderful project. I think it is way overdue. I mean, as with most agencies, we're underfunded to get this done. But any visit to the tidal basin, anytime, you can see that the water and site resiliency is a major challenge. But also the crowding, I mean, it's such a treasure to go down there for the cherry trees, but it's almost unpleasant because it's so crowded and how you move through it. So I think this is, this is a long overdue thing, and I think it's headed in the right direction. A couple of things to consider, I think the wetland, the introduction of the wetlands is a fantastic resiliency approach. I think what you'll want to do is make sure as you develop those concepts, you're really looking at the impacts on the the historic and cultural setting, because it is quite a, a big change. Not that it's the wrong one, just thinking through what, what its impact is. I think you really want to evaluate that. The other thing I encourage you to do, I mean, as Commissioner Green said, you know, I think the right move is to expand the experience. One thing that always strikes me about going to the tidal basin is it is very disconnected from the rest of the mall. So rather than thinking of it as, well, I know you have a scope, just as the tidal basin and West Potomac Park, I think you also need to be very intentional about connections across Main Avenue and Independence Avenue, both as you move to East Potomac Park, that's the best, you know, it's kept secret when you go to see cherry blossom, go down there, avoid the crowds. But, so I think if you could get people safely across those streets. The other thing, and this should definitely not be the tail wagging the dog, but as a district resident who needs to move through this space, cherry blossom time is the most abhorrent time to drive in the city because of the pedestrians, and it's, it's a safety concern, right? They're so taken with the beauty of it that they're wandering into the street, and traffic is abominable. So thinking about ways that you can provide safe, targeted pedestrian crossings to allow the traffic to continue to move through so the city can function are things that I would like to see evolve as this, as this goes, but headed in the right direction, and I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Tunstall Williams, Commissioner Dixon? You're on mute, Commissioner Dixon.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. I want to just say, if you have a need to place some cherry blossom trees, don't forget the Anacostia Park, that may be a good place to put some trees that we would enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash is not with us today, correct? Then we have Commissioner Hassett.
I don't have any additional comments or questions, but I'd like to thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Hassett. Commissioner Kozart.
I really want to thank the staff for the presentation and to National Park Service for their work on this. Very exciting project, and I look forward to what's next on it. No additional questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks to staff and the National Park Service for putting this presentation together and all the work that went up to doing it. This is a huge challenge, and as we heard from our speaker today, this ties into also other work going on to improve and correct issues around the tidal basin that National Park Service has started. And it's going to impact, you know, the FDR Memorial, the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial, and certainly the thought of, you know, pedestrian access across Main Avenue to make that a part of the National Mall, I think is critical. So it's going to be a long time in coming to come up with a good plan, but I salute the Park Service for doing this now. So we have something in place to plan their future programming and execution. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. I agree with you on all points. Commissioner Argo, are we ready yet? Can you hear me? Perfect. Okay.
Okay.
And how about that? I have no additional comments. Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Argo. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Sorry for the technical challenges today. And I just want to make a few comments, and I will make a very brief storytelling. You know, I've, I've been coming to DC for the past almost 30 years to work for my city, on behalf of my city, a small town in Iowa. And I was leaving the Phoenix Park Hotel one night, and the doorman said, you know, you know, Lassie, have you seen the cherry blossoms? And when I work in Washington, I do not take time to go sightseeing, because that's not why I'm here. But, and so I said to him, I said, no, I'll have to catch that on some other trip. I'm working and on my way home. But he must have said something to the cab driver, because shock of shocks, the cabbie on his way to Reagan National took me around, and I saw the cherry blossoms for the first time. And it was so breathtaking. It was so moving that I got on the phone in the cab and called my mom and dad in Iowa, who were almost 90. And my father got on the phone, who had recently suffered a brain aneurysm, had third of his right brain removed. Anyway, he was answering my mother's cell phone, and I said, Dad, what are you doing on the phone? He said, oh, your mom is in the beauty parlor. I mean, he was still functioning, but at probably about a 16-year-old level. And he said, your mom's in the beauty parlor, and I didn't want to go in. I said, I get it. And I said, well, Dad, tell mom, pack your bags. We're going to go to DC in the morning. I'm picking you up at 4:30 in the morning. So he said, okay. So I got off the phone, flew home, got home at about 10:00 that night, and my mom called and said, I think your dad's got a problem. I said, why, Mom? I said, are you packed? And she goes, well, that's, he's telling us we're going to Washington tomorrow. I said, we are. I'm going to pick you up at 10:30. Just pack clothes, the few things we can just wear, the same clothes, just have clean underwear and some new jewelry, you'll be fine. So anyway, we went to see the cherry blossoms. It was a bucket list for them. It was so moving for them to see that. You're right, they do need new circulation work in DC if you bring a car, which I'd never, you know, I'm not done with that family, et cetera. So we did see them. It was beautiful. Dad got to see the Korean War Memorial, which is a Korean War vet. That was very important for him, and of course, all the other memorials. And FDR was so important to them, because of course, that's because of course, that's when they grew up. MLK was critical to them, because that's a big part of our life as a family. And so it's a wonderful place. It's so worthy of all the concepts, A, B, and C, as far as I'm concerned. And I do think they work together. I mean, it does work together to disperse the cherry trees, works together to rebuild the tidal wall for flood protection. It re, it works to recreate that circulation. And all of those things and the connectivity, but all of those things can connect back to water resiliency, in my opinion. That's just my, my offering today, because pervious surfaces can help. Increasing the amount of vegetation and trees can help us to retain water. But we do need to stop the intrusion of water from the Potomac, and it's long overdue. And whatever it costs, if we want to make Washington beautiful, this would be a signature project to help to accomplish all of those goals, in my opinion. So thank you for the courtesy of allowing me to tell that story. It was a wonderful trip out. It was a wonderful trip back. We listened to Coburn's Appalachian Spring in the car on the way back. And it was a great trip. It was, it was memorable. And so I just, from a person from the outside, just know all the work that our federal staff do on our, on our behalf around the country. We appreciate it, and I think it's a great plan, a great start. Looking forward to public input. So thank you very much. Are there any further comments or questions? If not, could the secretary please call the role or confirm the motion in second and take the roll?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Stidham and seconded by Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Commissioner Argo voted yes for me.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes, and we have to have more stories from the chair.
And Commissioner Hassett?
Epstein.
Thank you very much. That motion has passed. Agenda item 6B is a request to approve comments on a concept master plan for the Humphreys Engineer Center Vision Plan and Installation Planning Standards. Jamie Herr will be presenting today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The United States Department of Defense has submitted the vision plan and installation planning standards for the Humphreys Engineer Center in Alexandria, Virginia for Commission comment. This is the first step in their development of an installation development plan or master plan. And overall, staff is recommending approval of comments on the conceptual vision plan and installation planning standards as the first component in this installation development plan for the Humphreys Engineer Center. Humphreys Engineer Center, or HEC, is a 583-acre civil works campus owned by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and managed by the Humphreys Engineer Center Support Activity, or HECSA, located in Fairfax County, Virginia, near Fort Belvoir. The HEC installation, outlined in green, was established in 1971 when land was first transferred from Fort Belvoir to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as a testing facility. It was designated the Humphreys Engineer Center in 1982. The site is adjacent to Fort Belvoir North Post on the southwest and southeast borders. The HEC site serves as the research center for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and a headquarters for HECSA, supporting Army Corps missions and goals. The site is not funded through congressional appropriation, but through tenant lease reimbursements. A majority of the main facilities on the site were constructed in the 1980s, including the Kingman Building, the Coot Building, and the Casey Building. The campus has one secure entrance on Telegraph Road, and the western portion of the site is bisected by Jeff Toddway. The primary functions on the campus today include engineering and construction management for national and international development projects, environmental management, hazardous waste cleanup, and resource management for Army Corps facilities nationwide, Army Corps research, development, and innovation work, and training in professional development facilities. The Humphreys Campus has not received a master, has not reviewed a master plan with the commission since 1998. The applicant initiated a master plan in 2020, but did not move it forward for review. The commission then requested an updated master plan as a condition of approval for three new buildings on the campus from 2020 to 2021. In response, the applicant initiated a new master planning process in 2024, including a multi-day stakeholder workshop. Staff recommends that commission support the applicant's early planning work and stakeholder engagement to develop an appropriate framework for future development plans. Today, we are looking at the concept master plan for the Humphreys Engineer Center that includes the vision plan and installation planning standards. As the concept review for a master plan, the commission should be focused on issues such as consistency with NCPC's comprehensive plan and other policies, appropriateness of the concept for the site, and are there any particularly unique or complex issues? As previously noted, the applicant has initiated the master planning process for the HEC site with the current concept review, which includes the vision plan and installation planning standards. And staff recommends that commission commend the United States Army Corps of Engineers and the Humphreys Engineer Center for initiating the master plan process, per the commission's previous recommendation. The remaining elements, including the environmental assessment and transportation management plan, are anticipated later this year and next year. The first step in the master planning process was to establish a vision statement. The statement that HEC is a safe, secure, and inviting campus, integrated with the natural environment, was established through robust stakeholder engagement. In addition, the applicant established goals that the installation should focus on in order to meet the vision statement. The five goals address facilities, transportation, safety, the environment, and design. Staff recommends that commission supports the proposed vision statement and goals to modernize facilities, strengthen transportation networks, design safety and security measures, protect the environment, and promote a campus-style atmosphere. The site has several existing environmental constraints, including forest stands and floodplain. The southwest portion of the installation also has significant slopes. As part of the initial mapping analysis, the applicant determined the green areas on the map are considered developable unconstrained, and the yellow areas are moderately constrained. The area of the campus deemed unconstrained accounts for 36.3% of the land and was determined to be relatively free from significant environmental constraints. However, these areas are heavily wooded, some with steep slopes, so this, this may impact the developability of these sites. As part of the framework plan development, the stakeholders identified elements that they considered blights and rights on the installation. Identifying these disliked or wanted features ensures the future plans will work to eliminate them or increase them as necessary or create solutions. Some of these blights include the older aging facilities, lack of sidewalks and lighting, insufficient parking, and traffic at the single entry. The stakeholders also identified landscape features, few sheds, the new buildings, the bus stop, and other characteristics of the built environment for preservation enhancement as rights on the installation. These areas include three labeled as prime development areas, including a large area in the southwest that is heavily wooded with steep slopes. Staff is more supportive of development in closer proximity to existing development. The draft vision plan includes other site elements that contribute to the overall framework plan based on stakeholder engagement, including walking paths, food trucks, and the developable areas. Staff notes that some of the visuals in the concept master plan are not consistent when referencing what areas of the campus are considered developable. And as these will impact the final master plan, staff recommends the commission request the applicant ensure any maps and diagrams are consistent when illustrating future development areas. The framework plan is designed to create a detailed spatial inventory and provide valuable insights into how the physical environment can support operational efficiency at HEC. The framework plan includes landmarks, nodes, incompatibilities, opportunities, and desired paths. The applicant continues, as the applicant continues the master planning process, staff suggests the commission recommend the plan focus on higher-density development at the center of the installation and avoid sprawling, large footprint development in areas with steep slopes and that are heavily wooded. Development on previously disturbed land outside of forested areas should be prioritized where possible and support the reuse of existing surface parking lots for redevelopment, as indicated in the vision plan. Another part of the concept master plan is the installation planning standards, which are intended to establish comprehensive planning standards for the campus to guide the development and maintenance of the installation, ensuring a cohesive, functional, and aesthetically pleasing environment. As such, staff recommends that commission support the proposed installation planning standards that will ensure future development is sustainable, high-quality, and promotes a campus-style environment that will be enjoyed by tenants and visitors. The final master plan for HEC is likely to include the potential for significant new development, given the funding mechanism of the installation relying on tenant leases. The installation planning standards envision modern, efficient, and walkable buildings with quality design and materials that contribute positively to the campus. The street principles encourage the creation of street networks designed with pedestrian paths, medians, and shade trees to prioritize safety, accessibility, and comfort. Traditionally, HEC has had a more insular design with one access point and limited transit access. But as new development is planned, improving connections with the surrounding region will also meet master plan's broader goals. As such, staff suggests the commission recommend the applicant coordinate with the Fairfax County Department of Transportation and the Virginia Department of Transportation to evaluate opportunities to enhance multimodal connectivity to the installation and minimize impacts on the surrounding transportation network, and continue to coordinate with VDOT, Fairfax County, and Fort Belvoir regarding future transportation improvements and environmental impacts. As noted previously, the installation is heavily wooded with steep slopes in the southwestern half. Most current development is concentrated near the entry on Telegraph Road. The stakeholder input gave a high value to the existing natural setting and walking paths. The landscape principles encourage design in harmony with nature and other built features, and with resilient stormwater features. As the applicant moves through the master planning process and more detail on future development and its impact on the natural environment is determined, staff suggests the commission recommend the applicant develop a tree preservation and replacement approach as part of the draft master plan that outlines where future tree replacement could occur if the future development plans for the installation are realized. In addition, staff suggests the commission recommend the plan include a comprehensive stormwater management approach that utilizes low-impact development techniques and other approaches that can be incorporated into future project implementation. The current HEC campus was not designed cohesively and is a collection, is more of a collection of buildings and parking lots. The site design principles encourage pedestrian-oriented design that is functional and transitions parking to the perimeter. As such, staff recommends the commission encourages the use of structured parking, oh, sorry. Structured parking, to the extent practical, to minimize impacts on the existing environment and maximize the potential areas available for other development. In addition, as the applicant is progressing through the master planning process, staff suggests the commission recommend the master plan's transportation management plan should consider a variety of strategies to minimize single occupancy vehicle use and achieve a parking ratio of one to two. This concludes my presentation. I have incorporated the executive director's recommendation into my presentation, and they are listed here for your reference. They are also available in the executive director's report. The applicant and their team is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
From the concept master plan for Humphreys Engineer Center Vision?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Been moved by Vice Chair Hewitt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner McMahon. Thank you very much. Now we will open up this project for questions or discussion by the commission. And we're going to begin with Vice Chair Hewitt, please.
First of all, thank you, Ms. Herr, for your presentation. So this, this is a wonderful opportunity, and I want to commend the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the HEC Center for resurrecting a master plan 27 years after the 1998 initiative. So it seems like it's much, much needed at this point in time. And I strongly agree and wholeheartedly agree with their recommendations, particularly to concentrate the, the development in the areas that already have the development. Because even in your vision statement, even in the vision plan, it says you want to preserve and integrate this with the environment. And if it's, if it's so heavily wooded, we want to protect that wooded area as much as possible. So I, I think if we focus and emphasize the concentrating, the development right there where we already have it is imperative, and also working on the transportation accessibility. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate the applicant's efforts in, in pulling this plan together, and I, and support the, support the goals of the plan and the way they have been bringing it about. And, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams.
I align myself with the previous commissioner's comments. The one thing that I would add, I think all the goals are laudable. The one that, that struck me is the talk about aging buildings and obsolete infrastructure. And I think, given the age of these buildings, you need to make sure, some of them, I thought, were rather handsome. You've evaluated their historic significance before you make plans regarding removal, and that was one thing I just didn't hear. So just something to include as it evolves. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon?
Yes. I have a question about solar opportunities, but I know it's an older building. You're trying to maintain its history. But is there a solar opportunity here at all?
Thank you. I, I think, was it a question, is there any solar?
That was a question. Is there a solar opportunity at all?
I'm sure there is. I think we can work with them on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you hear that, Commissioner Dixon?
I do, and I'm happy to hear that.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Hassett?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hassett. Commissioner Kozart?
I appreciate the presentation and the work on this project. No questions for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner McMahon?
And thank you for the presentation, the work of the staff and the Corps of Engineers. I'll associate myself with the other commissioners' comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. It looks like a great plan. And I really agree with the comments that have already been stated and have nothing doubt.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I appreciate, yes, I apologize for the technical difficulties. I'm not where I usually am. And I, I'm excited about this. I, I, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for this, this kind of revival of an iconic feature of, of our beautiful city. So appreciate all the work, and thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Argo. And I would just like to commend the applicant as well for taking the commission's recommendations and looking at and creating this, initiating the master plan, planning process. The site has potential. I align myself with the comments of previous speakers on the commission. I do think it's encouraging to see the engagement of stakeholders in all of these plans and as well as to focus on design quality and stewardship. And we look forward to going through and seeing this master plan developed. And that's all I have. Is, are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Can the secretary please confirm the motion in the second and call for the vote by roll call?
Yes, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewitt and seconded by Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hassett?
Epstein.
Thank you, Secretary. Hassett, oh boy, too many names. I'm sorry. Hottle Cox, thank you. The motion has carried. Agenda item 6C is the request to approve comments on the draft master plan for Arlington National Cemetery Memorial Avenue Entry Corridor Area Development Plan. Mr. Webb?
Yes, thank you. Hello again. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and commissioners. The Arlington National Cemetery has submitted the Memorial Avenue Entry Corridor Area Development Plan for Commission comment. This draft master plan includes the primary entrance and visitor facilities associated with the cemetery. The commission approved a real property master plan for the Arlington Cemetery on October 6, 2022, but deferred action on the area. but deferred action on the area that was identified as flex space located just north of Memorial Avenue. Arlington National Cemetery is a six hundred and thirty-nine acre cemetery located in Arlington County, Virginia, surrounded by major roadways, joint base Meyer Henderson Hall, developed areas of Arlington County, and lands under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service. As a reminder, the commission approved two expansions to the cemetery in the last few years. These include the Millennium Expansion, which was approved in twenty fifteen, with construction completed in twenty nineteen, and the Southern Expansion received final approval from the commission in twenty twenty-one. Both of these expansions will provide ANC much-needed burial capacity. And I will also note that in twenty twenty, a land swap occurred between the Park Service and ANC in which the land associated with the approach into ANC via Memorial Avenue to the Women in Military Service or America Memorial, or WMSA, which I'll call it for the rest of the presentation, and including the road and area on both sides of the hedgerow was transferred from NPS's jurisdiction to ANC. ANC had used the land under a memorandum of agreement, but now it is fully under ANC's jurisdiction. Today, approximately four hundred thousand veterans and their eligible dependents are buried at ANC. Service members from every one of America's major wars, from the Revolutionary War to today's conflicts, are interred at the cemetery. ANC hosts over three million visitors annually and almost six thousand funerals. At the draft review stage for a master plan for a facility such as Arlington National Cemetery, the commission should be focused on issues such as land use and impacts to historic or cultural resources. Staff analyzes this draft using guidance in the comprehensive plan, particularly those related to the parks and open space preservation and historic features. In preparing the draft master plan, ANC undertook a thorough process to identify problems and challenges particularly related to the visitor experience and pedestrian safety, as well as addressing pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. Therefore, staff supports the plan's commitment to maintain the mission and historic character of Arlington National Cemetery and the applicant's efforts to identify projects that improve the visitor experience, security, and eliminate existing pedestrian and vehicular conflicts. On the right of the image, you can see the area which is covered by this new plan. The entry area, excuse me, the entry corridor area includes Memorial Avenue, the Welcome Center, the WMSA Memorial, the existing visitor parking garage, and the administration building. The draft master plan includes improvements to vehicle and pedestrian circulation and wayfinding, parking garage circulation, security, historical view sheds, and educational and visitor experience. Most of the components of this amended plan were included in the twenty twenty-two approved plan by the commission. The most significant change is the demolition of the existing Welcome Center and the proposed construction of a new center. The entry corridor is located within the National Register Historic District for Arlington Memorial Bridge and the environs. This includes the primary view shed along the corridor from the Lincoln Memorial to Arlington House and the landscape of hedges and trees which frame Memorial Avenue. Staff supports the applicant's proposal to reestablish Memorial Avenue's historical alley, which includes the addition of White Oaks where needed, and restoring the Holly Hedge along the corridor. Staff notes that, that permanent vehicular screening is no longer proposed within the avenue. This revision will help protect this important symbolic view shed. As such, staff recommends that the commission commends the applicant for avoiding permanent vehicular and pedestrian screening facilities directly on Memorial Avenue to protect the historic views along the avenue. As part of the master plan, the existing parking garage will be retained, and new passenger, vehicle, bus access, and screening facilities will be added. In addition, the master plan includes a new proposed access road into the garage and new vehicular screening area. This road will move traffic off Memorial Avenue, and overall vehicular and pedestrian circulation is much clearer. The new access road into the visitor parking garage and vehicular funeral screening area is intended to help reduce pedestrian and vehicular conflicts as compared to the current conditions. As this, at the master plan level, the projects are still notional in design, and further improvements will occur. Therefore, staff recommends that as the vehicular access and screening facilities are further designed, the applicant evaluate opportunities to minimize paving where possible and avoid or mitigate tree removal. In addition, staff recommends the applicant continue to refine and clarify the proposed circulation network to further minimize conflict between, between vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists while meeting the cemetery's operational needs. The new screening facilities and entry road are located on the east side of the entry corridor adjacent to Virginia one ten or the Richmond Highway. Today, trees and other plantings help screen the existing parking structure and other uses from outside the cemetery. New or enhanced screening should be considered with any new projects to help preserve the setting of the Arlington National Cemetery as viewed from Virginia one ten. As such, staff recommends the applicant consider the feasibility of additional trees or other plantings along Virginia one ten to help screen the entrance drive and associated facilities. At the western edge of the entry corridor area, pedestrian crossing from the visitor center to WMSA is challenging due to the existing road alignment and pedestrian volumes. As part of the master plan, the applicant proposes improvements to enhance the pedestrian crossing at Eisenhower Drive. Staff finds these changes will be beneficial to visitors and therefore recommends the commission support for the proposed improvements at Eisenhower Drive, which will enhance pedestrian safety, including the raised granite pavement crosswalk, a new plaza, and intersection realignment. The applicant notes the existing Welcome Center, which is non, which is a nonhistoric building, has exceeded its original purpose and accommodates multiple functions, including screening that detract, detract from the visitor experience. As such, the master plan includes the proposed demolition and replacement of the visitor center, and this new approach allows for a more comprehensive redesign of the visitor facilities and circulation, including new plaza space, screening, and other services. Therefore, staff supports the proposed new Welcome Center and visitor facilities layout, which creates a clear, dignified, and integrated entry sequence for visitors and families to the cemetery. Staff also supports the construction of a new central plaza to include landscaping, paths, gardens, benches, and shelters with the potential for commemorative elements, educational signage, and other features to begin the visitor experience and set the tone before entering the new Welcome Center. Other proposed changes include a reconfigured trim plaza and queuing area to provide an enhanced visitor experience and avoiding pedestrian vehicular conflicts, along with new restroom facilities to improve the visitor comfort. Staff supports all of these proposed improvements. The applicant has proposed flex areas to the north of Memorial Avenue behind the existing fencing and hedgerows that could accommodate various facilities, including new columbarium. This is the same area the commission deferred action on during the master plan review in twenty twenty-two. The areas along Memorial Avenue behind the Holly Hedges are documented contributing landscape features for the larger National Register Historic District. So new facilities in flex space north area could impact the historic landscape and the setting. Given this, staff recommends that the applicant prioritize other areas that may be more suitable for new columbarium to avoid potential impacts to the historic landscape and critical view shed of the Memorial Avenue corridor. However, staff acknowledges the ongoing need for new burial space at the cemetery. As such, staff suggests the commission recommend that if flex area north must be considered for columbarium, the proposed layout and design should avoid mature trees and be low in scale to avoid impacts to critical views. Finally, the master plan has identified new burial space located to the south of the existing parking garage, and this flex area south does not have the same considerations as the flex space north of Memorial Avenue. Therefore, staff supports the flex space south for additional columbarium and encourages the inclusion of appropriate screening from the adjacent garage and parking areas. In conclusion, staff recommends that the commission comments favorably on the goals and overall approach outlined in the Memorial Avenue Entry Corridor Area Development Plan. Also, staff recommends that the applicant continue to coordinate with the Arlington County and Virginia Department of Transportation and the Virginia State Historic Preservation Office as the master plan is finalized and individual projects advanced to design. This concludes my presentation. As I've incorporated the recommendations into the presentation, I will not repeat them, but they're here for your reference. And I am joined by Arlington National Cemetery's Colonel Andrew Weicher, Stephen Crawford, and Agnes Sullivan, and other members of their team are virtual, who are also available to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you very much, Lee, and thank you to your team for more here in person today. Thanks for coming. And thank you to any consultants on, online. I'll now open it up. Are there, actually, are there questions first for the presenters? I mean commissioners, yes. Commissioner Stidham.
I did have just a few questions about the screening area and the guard booths. So what, what is the difference between those entries, the screening, the vehicle screening area versus the guard booth? Like if I miss the screening area and I go to the guard booth, what happens? Is there room to turn around?
There, there should be room to turn around. I think that will be readdressed when they look at how some of those movements may need to happen. I think that's one of the things they're continuing to explore.
Okay. One thing that I did see that was sort of missing is an emphasis on the use of metro and enough bus parking.
Does anybody from the team want to address, will that be looked at?
Thank you, Mr. Webb. I'm Stephen Crawford, architect and project manager. To answer your two questions about the parking, we are planning on removing over a hundred personal vehicle parking spaces and using that for the new entry for all vehicles. But in addition to that, we'll be adding about a dozen new bus parking spaces in exchange. So we are encouraging mass transit usage there. And to go back to your question about the vehicle screening, everyone is going to have to go into the cemetery, and the only people that will go to that mobile screening facility will be one, people that are allowed passage after going through the vehicle screening area. So you wouldn't just normally just keep driving through to that second booth. Everyone, when the gates open, will just be directed now or be directed that way. Right now, there is someone there from our, our team that is directing people to go either left into the cemetery or straight down Memorial Avenue. With this, with this new screening facility, everyone turns directly in, and then from there, they decide which way to go. If that helps answer your question.
No, that helped a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo? I'm sorry. No, I'm getting ahead of myself. Going to go back. Are there any other questions from any commissioners? Online? No, or in person. Okay. Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the comments on the draft master plan for the Arlington National Cemetery Memorial Avenue Entry Corridor Area Development Plan.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move that we accept the comments.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon has been motioned by Commissioner McMahon. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Stidham. Thank you. Now I will open this up to the commission for discussion, and I'm going to begin comments with Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. We went out there several times to visit the Arlington National Cemetery. We've especially spent time walking around Memorial Avenue and the areas nearby to it. I'm glad to see what the Corps of Engineers and the cemetery have come up with and worked with our staff to present. I think it's has lots of good solutions to challenge some of the issues that we have out there, especially as relates to vehicle traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and, and thank you for really thinking about this because entrance into this facility is really a challenge. But as you move forward, think more about queuing and how that will affect to be sure that the solution that is implemented is a viable solution that's a long term than just today, but thinking about the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
I appreciate the presentation. I think this is such an iconic place. And of this, you know, the attention paid in the way it's being paid right now to improvements and making this you know, just a superlative visitor experience, given what it all, all that it represents. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewitt.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Webb. These improvements are much needed, and I don't remember the actual capacity, not the capacity, but how many burials there are now. I heard it, but I don't. Can you tell me?
Roughly seven thousand burials a year.
A year? Okay. And how many, what's, how many are there now?
There's probably two hundred fifty thousand burial spaces that are occupied.
Okay.
Many of them are occupied with the veteran and the dependents.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you so much. Yeah, much needed improvements. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Now, I, so to begin by saying, I think the, the hemicycle has always been one of my favorite monuments in the district, and I think it's one of the most underappreciated monuments. And, and I especially appreciate its expansion in the nineties and in the ways that it utilized multiple generations of classical language to achieve that. And I hope that that carries through with the design of the new, the new visitor center, which, you know, I was just there recently, and it is crowded, and it is very difficult to move through that space. And I hope that that sophistication in the language is continued, because I think that's one of the great successful things about that site, that it has, you know, two real, two significant generations of, of design on that site that work so well together and support each other, and, and, and really hope that that continues. And another thing that I hope, what I would, I would like to see is, is obviously that, that clear access back to the monumental core is abundantly clear from that lower level. But I think what's less clear is the connection up to the Lee House, which is the reason why the cemetery is sited there. And it, it's a bit of a circuitous path to get to the Lee House. And it would be interesting to see either through, through whatever means to try from that lower level to, to emphasize the connection to Lee House and, and, and the reason for that there. But this is a wonderful plan, and I really, really appreciate this and and, and really hope that it continues the, the, the great legacy of, of architectural integration on the site. And, and I hope this continues to raise the profile of that site, because I really do think it's, 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 it's one of the places that I think it's the most, one of the most architecturally sophisticated sites in DC that, that's just, to me, chronically underappreciated. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall-Williams.
Thank you. I align myself with Commissioner Green's comments and would go a step further. The, the, speaking of the columbarium sites, I don't share the same pause with the northern site. I mean, I do, I think it could be mitigated through good design the impacts on the landscape. My concern with the south, and I think you're going to need both eventually, but my concern with the south is that it feels a little orphaned from the rest of the cemetery. And I think we want to make sure that, you know, all the service members there and their dependents have a similar experience. And so if that site, or as that site, I think if is definite, moves forward, thinking about ways to connect that back so it doesn't feel like a satellite or a second, which sometimes the columbarium can, particularly in such an iconic site as, as Arlington National Cemetery. So just things to think about, continuing on with, with Commissioner Green's points about the significance and the sophistication of the architecture. I think you can resolve both issues. But otherwise, I think it's a, it's a great site. My father's buried there. I love to go. It's, it's a wonderful environment.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall-Williams. And Commissioner Dixon? Has Commissioner Dixon left a meeting? I'll move on and see if we can find him.
Chairman, I, I support the project and thanks for the presentation.
Thanks, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Hassett.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any additional questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hassett. Commissioner Kozart?
I really appreciate that presentation was very informative and appreciate the work on this project.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kozart, and I too want to thank Lee. And I want to thank the Arlington National Cemetery for developing this thoughtful master plan. So thank you to the team that's involved. We really appreciate it. It is an iconic site, and I agree, and would like to associate my, my opinion with Commissioner Green and Commissioner Tunstall Williams. I do agree as well that some kind of connection to the Custis Lee Mansion is, is very important in this, in this plan. I agree with connecting the columbaria sites and making it a part of the overall vision for the master, for the master plan is going to be very important. But I agree that the Welcome Center screening facilities, the Entry Plaza, as well as circulation enhancements will make a better experience for visitors, and that's what we're focused on, is really remembering the people who are there and also providing for their families. So I look forward to continuing to work with the team going forward and work with you as the master plan is finalized. So thank you very much. Are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Can the secretary please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by roll call?
The motion was made by Commissioner McMahon and seconded by Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
I see.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hassett?
abstained.
Motion has carried. Thank you. We are now moving on to Agenda Item 6D. Thank you, Lee. Agenda Item 6D is a request to approve final site development plans for the Battleground National Cemetery Accessible Walkway and Landscape Improvements. Laura Shipman is making the presentation. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. The National Park Service has submitted final plans for site improvements to the Battleground National Cemetery, including a new universally accessible walkway and rehabilitation of the site's historic landscape. The Battleground National Cemetery is a one acre cemetery located on Georgia Avenue Northwest, five miles north, north of the US Capitol, and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. In 2014, NPS prepared a cultural landscape report that outlined treatment recommendations for the site, including a design concept for adding an accessible walkway. NCPC reviewed and approved preliminary plans for the project in October 2022 and was supportive of the applicant's preferred design for the entry and ramp as it provided the best alternative to allow equal access for visitors to the cemetery with minimal impacts to historic fabric. Here is a 3D view of the new universally accessible entrance gate and walkway. The ramp is accessed from the northwest corner of the cemetery and ends at a landing at the top of the entry stairs to ensure all visitors can proceed into the site from the same central location. The planting restoration plan includes the replacement of one existing tree, replanting of 26 missing trees, and the addition of a new swale between the historic and new retaining walls. NCPC received public comments recommending milkweed be included in the plant palette and non-native species and cultivars be replaced. In response, NPS noted the proposed landscape rehabilitation complies with the cultural landscape report recommendations, which allow for flexibility as needed for select plant replacements in response to contemporary challenges. A mix of predominantly native and some non-native deciduous and evergreen plant species will be replanted in kind at most former locations. A few select substitutions or additional plants are included to support the accessible walkway design or respond to the existing site conditions, horticultural issues, public safety, or resource protection. No plant species specified for the site is designated by federal or local jurisdictions as an invasive species. Overall, the project is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan policies, and as stated in the NCPC Pollinator Best Practices Resource Guide, this is a historic landscape where some plant species without known value to pollinators are appropriate to achieve the design intent. With that, staff recommends the commission approve final site development plans for accessibility and landscape improvements to the Battleground National Cemetery in Washington, DC. That concludes my presentation. Representatives from the applicant team are also available to answer any questions from the commission, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners have any questions? Commissioners online or in person? Hearing none, I would like to then move on to public testimony. And today we have one person.
Signed up to join us, and I believe he is online. Mr. Bernard Byrne, you will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Can you please let us know when you're ready? Are you ready?
Yes, yes, I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Mr. Byrne. Please proceed.
I have two things, comments on both, two different projects. Anyway, similar. The landscape plan for this project does not conform with several recommendations in your best pollinator best practice, best practice research guide as follows. Your guide recommends plantings of common milkweed with diversity of other milkweed species. The plant, the project's cultural landscape report, CLP, contains no plant requirements or suggestions except for trees and shrubs. Nevertheless, NTS has no plans to install milkweed. The NTS should plant common milkweeds to support monarch butterfly populations as your guide recommends. Your guide recommends a focus on native perennials that provide forage for pollinators and beneficial insects, as well as larval food plants of butterflies and moths, again, native. However, the NTS is planning to install two trees that are not only not native to the national capital region, but are well-known to be invasive. First of all, DOD Darceter, and here is where the staff made a mistake. The Halaikaia National Park in Hawaii has placed the Darceter on its invasive plant list. So NTS recognizes this as such. The NTS operates that park. The tree showed its invasiveness within the continental United States when reported outside of cultivation in Pennsylvania, South Carolina, Georgia, California, and Arizona. This is an invasive species, Harley Southern Magnolia. This tree showed its invasiveness in the national capital region where the saplings reported were reported in a matured pine forest in Prince George's County, Maryland. The book Florida of Northern Virginia states the trees that escape that naturalize in the tidewater area of Virginia and locally elsewhere behind beyond its natural range in the southeast of the United States. There's another indication of this trees invasive. So these are two trees they're going to plant in that area. Battleground National Cemetery is close to Rock Creek Park. Any plantings of Darceter or Southern Magnolia in this cemetery will place that large NTS property at risk for the trees documenting invasiveness. It's a really poor idea. Overco, overcup oak and inkberry holly, the CLP does not recommend these two plants, which are not native to the national capital region. Native plants should replace them. Your guide notes that plant cultivars are selective for traits attracted to humans, but not to pollinators, such as color, size, and shape. Some may be toxic. The guide then says prioritize the native original species wherever possible. The NTS is not doing this. It's for planting to install flowers cultivars whose parents are native to the same region. The applicant should instead replace the cultivars with their parents or with other native plants whose characteristics are similar to those of the cultivar as your guide suggests or recommends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Are there any questions for Mr. Byrne today? Commissioners, any questions online or in person? Well, thank you, Mr. Byrne. We do appreciate your coming to testify today. Is there a motion to approve the final site development plans for the Battlefield National Cemetery Accessible Walkway and Landscape Improvements? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Stidham and seconded by Vice Chair Hewitt. Now I will open up this topic to the commission for discussion. I'm going to start with Commissioner Kozart.
I appreciate the staff for the presentation and the work on this project. No additional questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner McMahon?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, staff, also for the presentation. I've got no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham?
I also appreciate the staff's time on this project. This has been a project the Park Service has been working on for a while. You wouldn't think it'd take us this long, but there are a lot of coordination when you talk about our historic site of this prominence. So I think the approach that we have taken is, is appropriate for the historic resource and provides the much-needed access.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo? Commissioner Argo, there you go.
I got it.
You got it.
I'm having challenges today. Sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. We understand.
So no additional, appreciate the, the work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Shipman, for your presentation, and I applaud the work of the National Park Service. This is very important, and it was somewhat challenging, I'm sure, but it's imperative to provide the accessibility. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green?
Thank you. No, I just appreciate the design of the ramp and it works quite well and, 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 and just appreciate all the work the applicant put into this project. I know that it's a steep grade change, and that was, was not, not the easiest, not the easiest grade to adapt to. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Thank you for the presentation, the project. Sometimes the simplest approach is the best one. So nice, nice work. No additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, appreciate the presentation. No further comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Hassett?
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hassett. I would just like to say that the changes are quite sensitive to the site, and I want to also support the comments, Commissioner Stidham, that, you know, it's important that the National Park Service take time for this site, and it's very worthwhile, and I think it's, as was stated, the simplest approach is the best, but it's, it's important, and thank you very much for the work on this, and thank you to staff for the presentation. Thank you to Mr. Byrne for his thoughtful comments. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing no further questions or comments, can the secretary please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by roll call?
The motion was made by Commissioner Stidham and seconded by Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo? I see she's saying yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
She's on now.
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hassett?
abstained.
Thank you. The motion clearly passes. Agenda Item 6E is a request to approve preliminary and final site and building plans for the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling Building 3623 Dorm Renovation and Stormwater Management. A presentation today by Laura Shipman. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. The Department of Defense has submitted preliminary and final plans for the renovation of dormitory building 3623 and related stormwater management on Joint Base Anacostia Bowling in Washington, DC. The existing dorm facility is about 45,000 square feet and located in the southern region of JAB. The building renovation project was included in the installation's 2021 Historic Bowling District Plan that was approved by the commission. The dormitory is currently closed and requires extensive interior and exterior repairs to provide accommodations for unaccompanied airmen. The proposed exterior building renovation work is primarily in-kind replacement of exterior finishes and roofing, and will not change the facility's character or building footprint. The applicant indicated that onsite stormwater management is required to meet District Department of Energy and Environment standards as the cost of renovation is more than 50% of the pre-project facility value. Two bio-retention facilities are proposed to the west and east of the building. Here is a detailed view of the planting plans. The proposed bio-retention facilities replace underutilized lawn area and do not require any tree removal. At the request of staff, the applicant agreed to include milkweed in the plant palette for the bio-retention facilities to support pollinator species. With that, staff recommends the commission approve the preliminary and final site and building plans for the renovation of dormitory building 3623 and related stormwater management on Joint Based Anacostia Bowling in Washington, DC. That concludes my presentation. Representatives of the project team are also available to respond to any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you to your team. Do the commissioners online or in person have any questions for Laura or for the team? Any questions regarding this project? Hearing none, we're going to turn then now to public testimony. We have one person who has signed up to speak today, Mr. Bernard Byrne. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Could you please tell us when you are ready? We can't hear you, Mr. Byrne. I think your microphone is still off.
I am ready?
Yes, we can hear you, and you're ready. Very good.
Thank you.
Please begin. Thank you.
Unlike the previous project, this, this, this project is generally consistent with recommendations in your Pollinator Best Practices Research Guide. However, it does need some improvements, but really minor. Your guide recommends plantings of common milkweed along with the diversity of other milkweed species. However, the applicant plants, plants install only swamp milkweed because it will be exposed to water when planted in a bio-retention facility. This may appear obvious, but it's really not. It's the wrong milkweed. Swamp milkweed is soil-free spread via seeds, does not spread by runners, and tends to disappear as vegetation densities increase. It is not a good vegetation competitor. Most plants live for only two to five years in gardens. As a result, the plants are not likely to survive very long if the applicant installs them in the bio-retention areas. In contrast, common milkweed grows naturally in ditches, which often contain as much water as the bio-retention facilities. The plants are spread by runners, and it's an excellent competitor. I've seen this, seen this spread throughout a large bio-retention area within a few years after planting. The applicant should add it to the plant list. They can keep the swamp milkweed as well, but add the common milkweed. Your, your, your guide recommends a focus on native perennials that provide forage for pollinators and beneficial insects, as well as larval food plants or butterflies and moths. However, the applicant plans to install a grass, fairy drop seed, which as its name fairy suggests, is not native to the national capital region. The applicant should replace that plant with a similar species, such as Indian grass, that is native to this region. Your plant notes that plant cultivars are selective for traits attracted to humans, but not pollinators, size, color, and shape. So may be toxic. I said it before in the last speech. The guide therefore states, therefore prioritize the native, this original native species wherever possible. However, the applicant plans to install four cultivars whose parents are native to that national capital region. But these are cultivars. The applicant should instead replace the cultivars with their parents with other native plants whose characteristics, height, spread, flower color, leaf color, et cetera, are similar to those of the cultivars. You really can avoid cultivars. You shouldn't use them unless they're really important or they have better swagability or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Are there any questions for Mr. Byrne? Are there any questions, commissioners online or in the chambers? Thank you for your testifying today, Mr. Byrne. That concludes public testimony, and we're going to move on now. Is there a motion to approve preliminary and final site and building plans for the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling Building number 326, I'm sorry, 3623 Dorm Renovation and Stormwater Management Project?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr., thank you, Commissioner McMahon. It's been moved and seconded. It is now open to the commission for discussion, and I want to begin deliberations with Commissioner McMahon.
No, good simple design, addresses the key issues as a, a air force starts taking care of JAB. I have no other comments.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham?
Thank you for the presentation. No comments from me.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo?
I appreciate the presentation and the work that's going to be done here. No additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewitt?
Thank you for the presentation, Shipman. These are much-needed renovations for those who serve our country. These are much-needed renovations for those who serve our country.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. Commissioner Green?
You just want to thank the applicant for the work they put into this project and look forward to its completion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Thank you for the presentation. No additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do see a lot of roof space and it's my usual concern about solar utilization. So, I'm not going to press it since we're so far along and I want to see this go forward. But I just would like to raise it again. I kind of hate to raise it always. I would think that we could probably have it as an automatic check when these projects come through. Thank you very much and thanks for the presentation and I support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Hassett?
No additional comments for me. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Hassett. Commissioner Kozart?
Appreciate the presentation and the work on this important project. No additional comments or questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. The project will provide much-needed renovations to housing for airmen on Joint Base Anacostia Bowling and that will enable the installation to continue to meet its important mission. Thank you again to Mr. Byrne for his comments. Are there any further comments or questions from the commission? Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Can the secretary please confirm the motion in a second and call for the vote?
The motion was made by Vice Chair Hewlett and seconded by Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo? See, she says yes. Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams? Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Dixon, are you still with us? And Commissioner Hassett?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried and I do want to thank Laura again. Thank you for the presentation. The Agenda Item 6F is a request to approve preliminary and final site development plans for President Lincoln's Cottage Interpretive Gardens. Presentation by Jamie Herr.
Good afternoon. I am here to close this out today. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The Armed Forces Retirement Home has submitted preliminary and final site development plans for new interpretive gardens at President Lincoln's Cottage. The cottage is located on the grounds of the Armed Forces Retirement Home but is maintained and owned by the nonprofit President Lincoln's Cottage. The planned interpretive gardens are intended to represent various parts of Lincoln's life from his formative years to his legacy as shown here. This new design will improve the visitor experience and showcase plant materials representing President Lincoln's life. And as such, staff recommends that commission approve the preliminary and final site development plans for President Lincoln's Cottage Interpretive Gardens at the Armed Forces Retirement Home, 3700 North Capitol Street, Washington DC. Staff has received public comments related to the inclusion of milkweed and the replacement of certain plants which may be considered invasive. In response, the applicant updated the planting plan to replace several plants as noted here. Others may be substituted depending on availability. This landscape is not a meadow but part of the historic grounds of the Armed Forces Retirement Home and the historic Lincoln Cottage. The proposed gardens are interpretive in nature and intended to tell the story of President Lincoln's life and legacy. Overall, staff finds the project is not inconsistent with NCPC policies and guidance regarding plantings or landscape treatments. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you to the team. Do commissioners online or in person have any questions for Jamie? Hearing none. We will move on. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary and final site development plans for President Lincoln's Cottage Interpretive Gardens?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion, a motion from Vice Chair Hewlett and a second from Commissioner Dixon. I'll now open it up to comments and discussion by the commission and I'm going to begin with Commissioner Tunstall Williams.
Oh, it was a great, short and sweet presentation. I don't have a whole lot to say. Great project.
Hi, good ladies.
Beautiful site.
I don't have a permission to come in, but let me just find out.
Commissioner Dixon, you, would you like to comment here next? Commissioner Dixon?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Hassett?
No additional comments for me. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Hassett. Commissioner Kozart?
No additional comments. Thank you for the presentation and the work.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner McMahon?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham?
No comments from me either.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo? No additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Commissioner Argo. And Vice Chair Hewlett?
Thank you, Ms. Herr. No additional comments.
Thank you. And Commissioner Green?
I'd hate to clutter up such an efficient presentation with a long string of comments. So, I'll thank the applicant and the, and the staff for this and look forward to seeing this project move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Green, and I won't provide a lengthy comment to either except that this is one of those little gems in Washington that is a wonderful historic site and the gardens are going to enhance it. It's going to be a beautiful addition to the, to the site. So, thank you and thank you for your presentation as well. We are very grateful. Can the secretary please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewlett and seconded by Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hassett?
Abstain.
Thank you, Megan. We appreciate it and the motion has carried. Are there any further questions or comments from commissioners? Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. The open session, or I'm sorry, the, the commission has, this concludes our open session. The commission will meet again on Thursday, Thursday, April 3rd at 1:00 PM. And if there's no further business, this session is now.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I'm moving between airport gates, so that's why. But thank you. I just want to apologize.
Thank you. No worries.
I tried to make it transparent, but I couldn't. So, anyhow, bye-bye.
We're grateful that you joined us. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. This session is now adjourned.